This meeting serves as the board's annual organizational meeting in accordance with Board Policy 9321. I reside over the meeting for a short period of time and am the board of Education and vice chair. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
In accordance with the policy, I would like to appoint Michelle Devine as Acting Secretary for the purposes of assisting me with the election of a Chair. We will now proceed with the election of the Chair. Nominations do not need a second according to Robert's Rules of Order. The floor is now open for nominations for Chair of the Waterford Board of Education. Are there any nominations? Craig?
I'd like to nominate Pat Fedor, please.
Pat Fedor has been nominated for the position of Chair. Mrs. Fedor, do you accept that nomination?
Yes.
Are there other nominations for Chair of the Waterford Board of Education? Are there any other nominations for Chair of the Waterford Board of Education? Hearing none, nominations are now closed. Robert's Rules of Order and Board Policy says a person must be elected by a majority of those members present. There are, I believe, seven members here tonight at this moment. It will take four votes tonight for Mrs. Fedor to be elected Chair. All those in favor, we'll do this by hand, but if we need to, we'll roll call. All those in favor of Pat Fedor for Chair of the Waterford Board of Education signify by raising your hand. There are enough votes. And no need for a roll call vote. I'd like to congratulate Pat Fedor on her election as Chair of the Waterford Board Ed. And she will reside over the remainder of the meeting, including the election of a Secretary for the Board of Education. Please join and congratulate her.
I'll come there if you can help me.
Yes.
Thank you, everyone, and I'll try to carry on as we have been and work together as a board for the students of Waterford. We will now elect a Secretary for the Waterford Board of Education. The floor is now open for nominations for Chair. Oh, we did that one.
For Secretary, sorry.
My script. Okay, we're gonna skip that one. Are there any nominations for Secretary of the Board of Education? Going once.
I'll nominate Michelle Devine.
Michelle Devine has been nominated. Do you accept that nomination?
Uh, who is, can you tell me who the current Secretary is?
Kamala, Kamala K. G. Lam.
Oh. Uh, yes.
I believe she said yes.
I'm sorry.
Yes.
Yes. Are there any other nominations? No other nominations, the hearing, our nominations are now closed. Robert's Rules of Order and Board Policy states that a person must be elected by a majority of those members present. It will take four votes tonight for a person to be elected Chair. Pardon? As Secretary, I'm still reading my other chair.
That's my fault.
All right, let's bring this to a vote. All in favor of Michelle Devine as Secretary of the Waterford Board of Education? Please signify by raising your hand. We don't need to do a roll call vote. Congratulations, Michelle.
Thanks.
All right, this time, we will be moving to introduction of visitors. And I will try to figure out who's a visitor here. Our Waterford administrators, we have here Welch Collins. He's here as the liaison from the Board of Finance, so welcome.
Thank you.
Jody Nizarcheck, our second select person and Waterford Youth Services Bureau rep.
I also, I asked Rob to put me in the liaison for where does that look for us?
Are there any other visitors that I might have missed? Uh, next public comment. We had some written correspondence sent in. One of them was letting us know that Barry Welch Collins would be the rep from Board of Finance. And the other was a thank you card from the Dan Stewart family or flowers that were sent. Is there anyone here in the public who would like to comment? Yes?
Sure, I have something I do, I don't hear it.
Yep, there's a microphone right up there.
Can you hear me all from here or?
No.
Where am I standing?
Thank you. Do you mind if I sit and use this? My name's Valerie, for those of you that don't know me, some of you I know and have seen, some of you I've talked to and had meetings with. Both of my boys went to Waterford High School.
I'm sorry, can you just give your full name and address, please?
Yeah, my name is Valerie Shalalia. My address is 10 Cape Fisher Way in Waterford.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So everyone's mental health and physical health have suffered immensely over the last two years. Lockdown, mask mandates, emergency vaccinations, isolations, a split country and failing systems on all levels. Can anyone here tell me why after eighty-five percent of this town is vaccinated, we are seeing the highest movement rates ever? Probably not. We went over a year working in the hospitals without protective equipment, without vaccinations, and have not seen rates this high. I'm just trying to figure it out still, I think everybody is. I don't think anybody has data that can solidly say that we're safe or we're not safe vaccinated or unvaccinated. I'm just trying to understand why some kids in school are still being treated like outcasts or disinformed or ignorant or from families that don't care because they're not vaccinated. Maybe blindly becoming vaccinated by chemicals that most of you in this room cannot name or define? Maybe that's ignorant. Maybe the vaccinated are carrying such a large viral load and asymptomatically spreading these new variants to everybody around. I've called the Department of Public Health. I've called Lex Light Superintendent, Waterford High School Principal, town officials, and most importantly, the CDC multiple times. The President refuses to talk to you at the CDC. The President refuses to talk to you at Department of Health. I have left emails with multiple questions regarding our school systems, vaccination statuses, and also natural immunity. I have gotten zero responses back, or I have gotten the response I will look that up and get back to you. And that's a shame because these are the people that are making recommendations that we're following on a daily basis. I understand how hard it is to make these decisions when you have a community that's completely sly and you're trying to do what's best for everybody. But there are a lot of conscious and unconscious bias that are being imposed on the kids on a daily basis, some of which have been recorded on these smartphones and the kids keep on them every day. Do you know how many people could answer even the simple question of natural immunity at Yale and Haven Hospital sitting before the committee when we sit at the board meetings? None. So we don't have answers, but yet we have a lot of recommendations. There is no research being done on natural immunity, but there's a ton of research still going around on how many COVID positive cases we have and how many new variants we have. There's been research on prolonged mask use. Speaking of mask use, we wear these surgical masks every day. COVID is supposedly airborne. This does absolutely nothing but threaten, prevent drop of precautions. So we're doing a good job with the flu and other colds, but not COVID, and that's why. We also have full capacity in our school systems, which is great that we're back in school, but then we take the sporting events like basketball, which is now starting, and we can have fifty percent capacity. That can't make sense of that for the kids, that can't make sense of it for us. If we need to buy a better ventilation system, because this is how our life is going to be for the children, well, yes, that's what we should invest in, just like the doctors who don't discuss them. Right now, suicide is among the highest unsealed children. It's been for a long time. The AIDR, American Institute for Economic Research, published an article in March seventeen, twenty-twenty-one, that has a great chart that you guys should look at. Total COVID deaths in school age children versus suicides. I barely hear my kids come home and talk about anything but suicide prevention. My kids' natural immunity was over twelve thousand. For those of you that don't know, zero point nine is a positive natural immunity. And natural immunity is what people do when they take a vaccination, is that they're striving to attempt people to become immune. My kids were twelve thousand. They became vaccinated, I retested their natural immunity, it cut their natural immunity down to six hundred. When I asked for research or your data on when it happened, I couldn't get an answer. I was just told we did the right thing.
I would just wanna stop, there was a three-minute limit?
Yeah.
And it's already, we're at four and a half, so I just wanna give you a little?
Perfect, I'll finish up.
Wrap that up.
Thank you, yeah, I'll finish up.
Sure.
I wanna know why the town in the beginning of all this wasn't offering large meetings for the parents. I wanna know why parents are allowed to decide the choice whether the kids get to wear a mask or submit natural immunity paperwork if they choose to versus vaccination status. And lastly, I just wanna say that the science suggests that our children are not in danger or a threat right now, and that is factual. If you are vaccinated and you choose to wear your mask, why are you concerned over whether somebody else isn't if you're protected? My vote, my choice, right, or does that hold in regards to gender, identity, and abortion rules? When it comes to our children, they come first. When my kids were isolated for not being vaccinated, there was no Zoom offer for my kids at home, and their grades dropped in two weeks and not one school person called my children to see how they were feeling. I had to call to make sure that that happened. I'd let them make the choice, they became vaccinated, they moved forward, and they were treated completely different. I think that our town needs to work on this for our kids. It's a really sad time, thank you.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak?
I just muted it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, we will now move on to item number two, the Consent Agenda, which includes minutes from, let's see, the, our minutes from our November eighteenth meeting, the monthly expenditure report, food service financial report. Are there any questions? Discussion?
I'm with the Waterford Board of Education, approves Consent Agenda, insisting of the minutes from the November eighteenth, twenty-twenty-one meeting, and the monthly expenditure reports, the November twenty-twenty-one, the food service financial report, the November twenty-twenty-one.
Is there a second?
Captain? Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? No objections. Item number three, the reading and review of correspondence. I did mention before the correspondence from Board of Finance and from the Dan Stewart family, and there was no other correspondence received by the board this past month. Superintendent's Report?
Sure. Good evening, everybody. A couple of updates on district happenings. Uh, we will, well, let me start off by saying this. We have posted our Director of Special Services position, which will be open this spring, and we're actively advertising across the state in many ways. We will need board representation on that committee. So in the coming days, I will be reaching out and seeing if there's interest amongst support members to serve on that committee, which will obviously be in the new year, January timeframe. Also, obviously includes staff in that. We did kick out surveys to staff and parents of students receiving special education services around attributes sought in a new director, and response has been strong, which is excellent. Just wanna share with the board, as we've increased devices in the district, several thousand new devices over the last twenty months or so due to the pandemic and the need to really ensure that each student in our district has a district's supplied device. If so, you know, you know, if the child doesn't have his own device. That has come with a large amount of new work, including not only distribution, but they don't last forever and they get dropped and broken and whatnot. So our new Director of IT, Mark Gier, came up with an idea to use our Waterford High School students as IT interns within the department to help with some of the minor break and fix issues in maintenance of Chromebooks and other devices. And is working closely with the high school business department, the business teacher, and to acquire interns to work several hours a week after school hours in the IT department. So, want to compliment Director Gier on that initiative. We have traditionally at times employed high school students during the summer. This would really expand the program to during the school year, so compliments. Update, as I shared last board meeting, Plainville Public Schools was due to visit the little school and learn more about our math program as they contemplate changes in their math program. The State Department of Ed recommended Clark Lane Middle School. They did visit. We were subsequently contacted by East Hampton Public Schools, and I believe they'll be visiting us in the new year. So we're excited again to share the work in math going on here at Clark Lane. Winter sports are back underway at Waterford High School and Clark Lane Middle School, and I know that's an important part of school life, and students and parents looking forward to those opportunities. We restarted Project Oceanology, which has been a longstanding program here in the district. Again, looking forward to providing those opportunities to our students. You may have seen on social media and elsewhere, Waterford Public Schools last week participated in our code program, all the way down to the elementary level, really providing our students something that we do throughout the year, really focusing on it over the course of a week, providing those computer science and computer programming opportunities for our students, which we know will be a big wave of the future. Waterford Public Schools received twenty-five boxes of books from Books-A-Million from their book and toy drive. Books totaling thirteen thousand, seven hundred dollars were donated back to the district and will be distributed across our schools, and it's a program we've been a part of for several years. And it's just a wonderful opportunity to continue and enhance, you know, the access to literature that our students have. Last Friday, the Waterford Public Schools participated in Pyjama Day to benefit cancer research and cancer services at the Connecticut Children's Medical Center, raising over four thousand dollars throughout the district. And that was a region-wide, if not statewide, effort to benefit the Connecticut Children's Medical Center. So another example of our, of our students and staff giving back and contributing to the community. Semester one capstone final exhibitions will be held throughout the school day on January thirteenth and fourteenth. These exhibitions will feature the work of all of the class of twenty-twenty-three members, or this year's juniors, who have completed capstone during semester one. Will be another batch in semester two. Uh, and certainly, if there's interest amongst any board members, please reach out to Caroline in my office and we'll get those names to the high school. And it's, uh, it's exciting, this is our first go-round with the capstone program. And just in my brief conversations with, with Mr. Hauser and other administrators at the high school, there's a variety of projects coming forward, so it's, uh, it's exciting. The district once again partnering with Waterford Youth and Family Services Bureau on supporting their holiday efforts for families in need. I'm sure Ms. Nzarcheck may report more on that, but that's a, again, longstanding tradition as we collaborate and help support their efforts. Before I close, I did wanna mention that I did send out a district-wide message today to all staff and parents about a nationwide TikTok post concerning the possibility across the United States about school violence tomorrow. Nationwide, but more importantly, locally, there is no credible threat at, at the local level. I've talked with Chief Balistrasi today on a number of occasions. And while there is no local credible threat at all, we will have an increased presence in our schools tomorrow by Waterford Police Department. I do want parents to send their children to school tomorrow, as our schools are safe, but obviously that decision is ultimately up to parents. But again, our team, our administrative team, myself, active communication throughout the day to make sure that we are following all our protocol laws. I do encourage parents to reinforce at home the importance of your child, if they hear or see something, their responsibility and your responsibility as a parent, to make sure that gets reported, whether it's to us, Waterford Police, State Police, whomever. There are multiple avenues for reporting information, including an anonymous tip feature that was in the email, but is also prominently on our homepage. With that said, I wish all of our families and our staff happy holidays despite the challenges. This is a community that continues to pull together, support one another, help one another. And all brighter days are ahead. I do wish everybody happy holidays and safe holidays. That concludes the superintendent's report.
Thank you. Uh, move to item number five, Committee and Other Reports. I believe the Board of Ed, APOC class size committee had met. Is there anyone who wants to report on that?
Yes, um, we are still working and hopefully proactive with our dwindling class sizes on what our future will look like and what our class offerings and class sizes will look like. We didn't speak for themselves, but also we were recorded, so if anyone is interested, certainly you can watch the videos as well. Uh, I also, if you'd like, I can report from the Policy Committee. We are meeting again with dress code issues on the twentieth, and that is an ongoing discussion as well. Also, the Retirement Board that last night, and I am the person for the Retirement Board. And the fiduciary, I just gave us a quarterly report and approved.
Thank you. Again, it's Finance Committee?
We, we also, that's you on the second committee, went over some of the beginnings of our line items. That is also recorded in our minutes reflect book there.
Thank you. Uh, we have some liaison requests. Jody, Waterford Youth Services Bureau?
Well, right now, there's an open house that new services report is six. Um, just to remind everybody that helped our donors from families. We have quite a few families, quite a few senior citizens this year, and also I'm really happy about the fact that there are twenty-two veterans over at Victoria Gardens. We were able to get all twenty-two of them adopted, so we're gonna be doing it there for so long on Saturday morning. I wanted to thank also, uh, at school, and I don't know if I said this last month, they came and sent to our letter as a Veterans Day, and they just loved it, and I was so proud of them. It was just, it was just such a nice ceremony. Also, uh, they've been getting more calls for counseling, and I know these things, you know, you're, um, you know about this, you know, you're confident about it, and there's just so many more needs in town, you know, for our kids. And I attempted a Zoom meeting, like, uh, C-Rat, and I don't know if Michelle wants to report on that, but I would like to see not only the Board of Ed, you know, having to, having, not urgent, but having the responsibility of helping our kids, anyway, we can get the town involved or snow. Because I think if only our town, if the town pulls together, I think we can go to help our kids. So just keep that in mind, I don't know if anything comes up, but I just all work together. And just please thank all the teachers and classes that helped, you know, adopt families, because there were quite a few families in need, we were able to get here, all of them, so thank you.
Thank you. Uh, were there any other liaison meetings? Any reps here for any other meetings that might have happened last month?
I'll, I'll just report from Board of Finance. I mean, we, we met, we elected Chair Glenn Patterson, we elected a new Secretary Bill Sheehan, and that was really the only extended the action on our first agenda, because we had tabled everything for the next meeting. But glad, glad to be here, glad to be your liaison.
Thank you. Uh, let's move on to new business. Uh, this is, we need to appoint someone to the retirement commission, and that's the only office of different commissions for the town that needs to be done prior to the first of the year. And Marcia is a current representative.
I would like to see someone else step up and join the committee.
That's not going to carry. Is there anyone else who's interested in serving?
It's pretty much orderly and as, as needed.
Day or night?
I'm sorry?
Day or night?
Uh, usually at night. Is there a nomination? What was that?
I nominate Craig.
I second. Is there any discussion? I second that. Any discussion? Thank you, Craig. All in favor of Craig Merriman becoming the Representative on the Retirement Commission? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Against? Start Marcia. Epstein? Congratulations, Craig. Uh, the other, let's see, section, then, Section B is the review of the other committee and liaison assignments. And you all have a sheet in your pocket with the different opportunities. And please get them to Caroline, your choices for what you would like to serve on for the following year. And that will be decided on the January meeting. Section C is discussion of possible action of the twenty-two, twenty-three, will your calendar?
Nothing earth-shattering here, it's an annual function of the Board of Education. No real anomalies next year that we're facing in regards to the schedule. First day will be that last Wednesday in August that we usually start school on for students. Staff will report into work that Monday, and, you know, you can see throughout the course of the year the various, you know, event. the course of the year, the various, you know, events and school closings. Happening, answer any question, but fairly straightforward.
Are we, are we coordinating with local areas of schools?
Yeah.
Is there any thought about having a statewide calendar?
Yeah, it's a great question. So, I'm gonna say maybe a half dozen years ago, there was state legislation saying there needed to be a consistent regional calendar, so we're part of the Lern region. That mandate went away. With that said, this calendar is reflective of the agreed-upon calendar amongst the superintendents in the Lern region. So, it is consistent, which obviously has benefits in terms of staff who may live in another town, students in their hometown district, but they work here and, you know, coordinating those days. So, things like ageable vacation are, are consistent with, with air conditioning, for the most part.
Thank you.
Great question.
Do there any other questions? So, we do need a motion to approve?
We did.
I move that the Waterford Board of Education approves the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-three school year calendar as presented.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against? End of state? So, the calendar passes.
Great.
The next item for discussion is discussion of possible action on the student transportation contract.
Sure. Little background, I've talked about this at least, well, Joe and I, Joe and Senior Director Finance and I have mentioned this at previous board meetings, our current five-year contract with Student Transportation of America expires this coming June thirtieth of twenty twenty-two. We pursued an extension with them rather than go out to bid at this time due to instability in the market, whereas a lot of school districts, really not just in our region or state, but really nationwide, are dealing with significant bus run problems, which, you know, we haven't had yet to deal with any significant way. We are invited, our recommendation is to extend with the current vendor. The other advantage of extending, and we are recommending the three-year option, not only that are the terms more advantageous to the Board of Education, but it would also align us with a neighboring community in our plan in three years, which would do with more leverage and buying power would be to do a joint bus bid with a neighboring community and, you know, leverage and get more interest. You might recall five years ago, when we went out to bid, there was one bid, it was the current vendor. And our thinking is, if the bid in three years after this other community and us, I won't mention their names because they might need to brief their Board of Education, if we align a bus bid of, you know, fifty-five or sixty buses as a little more, our hope is power in the market than, than our twenty-two or twenty-three buses. Joe, I don't know if there's anything to add?
No, I mean, outside of, outside of the fact that STA has been able to maintain their operations for this entire year, guys are good company. We actually have a surplus of drivers, drivers versus other towns. We have two to three contingency drivers at all times, which is why our buses have been able to run. Overall, it's a modest increase that we're looking for. This actually alleviates the contractual raises to the drivers for contractual purposes. Bus contract is roughly two million dollars. One point two five percent is twenty-five thousand dollars per year, and two point five percent is fifty thousand, which is, you know. So, over the length of the contract is roughly a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar increase. This vendor has been very helpful.
Our previous five-year contractors, five years at three percent, so to see, again, we're recommending the three-year option of one point two five, two point five, and then two point five in the third year. Happening, answer any other questions?
Mr. Johnson?
Did you go out to bid and seek bids or no?
We did not really go around, our fleet is stable, meaning we are, we are meeting our obligations for bus runs, some minor disruptions to athletic events, et cetera, but our, but our morning, afternoon runs have been very stable at a time when other districts in this region and beyond have faced significant issues. We, due to maintaining stability and aligning with a neighboring district, we did not go out to bid.
So, how do we know that someone else can provide the same service at a lesser price if we don't even try to go out to bid and at least seek quotes to see if we're not, if we're not even shopping?
I'll hand it over to Joe, kind of here on the spot, to really talk about market trend and inflation.
To answer Chris's specific question, why would, every time a business condition or job market would dictate, but what is it, what direction we should be going in or should be going in? I, I don't really deal in guarantees in this regard, but I can, with a high degree of probability said, we went out to bid, we had another vendor, we're gonna have a very difficult time keeping those buses staffed. Right now, we have an established workforce that's, that's going to stay in this town, we're gonna continue driving. I cannot give you that same guarantee if it was another vendor. I can guarantee you that they would actually poach, poach the drivers, and I know to which town they would be going. Because right now, they're actually running out of resources for a new order for other towns.
Just a little bit of history, five years ago, when our contract was up, we had negotiated an extension with the current vendor at that time. The decision of the board was to go out to bid and not extend. The bid that came in, it was only one bidder, was significantly higher than the extension we had negotiated.
The original extension that, that they proposed five years ago was six percent over three years. It was zero, three to three bids that came back, we did put it out to the current bid. The only thing that came back was five, five years at three percent.
Any other questions?
I don't doubt that this is not good. I feel like I'm on the, and I realize that there is a, a bus driver crisis in the state and in the country, but it makes no sense to me that we at least don't go out and explore other bids to just shop it, to see where we're at. That's just my opinion. I'll be voting no. I think we should go out to bid.
Are there any other questions?
Is there a timeline on the contract? Can we share?
Marcia?
Current, current contract expires June thirtieth. I don't know if there's a, this is only good for X amount of days, Joe, this particular offer or negotiated offer with the bus company. A bid process is gonna take several months.
Yeah, so I did not have an explicit conversation with them at the, you know, ballpark.
Yeah.
And I wouldn't give that kind of ultimatum, that, you know, sides night is gone, but...
Were you willing to give us the trending numbers also?
What trending numbers? What other?
Yeah, what, what you see?
Oh, just, what Tom was referencing was just general inflation. So, right now, general inflation through October was six percent. Private employers are expecting to see, to see salary increases of around three point eight. Public side lacks, so municipalities, we're like a ship, right? Very slow to respond, so we're slow on the uptick, we're slow on the way down. So, you know, you wouldn't typically expect to see those, that kind of appreciation on the public side. I think this is good, and, and really do, I believe that we're gonna see six percent, like, was us six percent last year. I think we're still gonna be in two and a half to five, five and a half next year. I mean, Americans are, we're spending a lot of money.
That's the whole contract worth?
Uh, two million dollars.
So, on two million dollars, you don't go out to bid to just shop it on two million dollars. No one thinks that's insane, that on two million dollars, you know, call from the other companies and go, what's your price? That's just my thought.
I actually can't run, do, 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 like that.
I'm sorry, Michelle, here. I didn't hear what you said.
Why don't you explain the bid process?
Yeah, so, municipalities, we're, we're open and transparent, so it's either I put it out to collect a bid, and, you know, I have a lot through the companies, sign-ups, talk about, we go over the, the bidding, bid packaging, we have an open bidding process. If I were to call up, like, let's say, M&amp;J over in Old Sable, I mean, that, that gets very close into, like, a, 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 a,